I'm Dr. Tim Locklear, Superintendent here in Moore County Schools. It's my pleasure to facilitate first our preliminary matters tonight, which are the swearing in of our three new board members and reelected board member, Mr. David Hensley. So I want again, thank you all for coming tonight and celebrating this and celebrating their commitment to public service to our students and our overall community of Moore County. So thank you for being here. So with that, I'm going to turn it right over to Mr. Todd Manus, who is going to lead the swearing in ceremony. And administration of oath of office first to Dr. Amy Dowell, who represents District One. Dr. Dowell? Do it at the podium. We're going to do it right there at the podium there. Sir? We'll have the opportunity for family pictures and celebrations immediately after the swearing in of our other three members. We will have a brief recess and celebration, just so family members will know. Our next administration oath of office will be to Mr. Steve Johnson, who represents District Two. Mr. Johnson? Our next administration oath of office goes to a reelected member, Mr. David Hensley, who represents District Four. Mr. Hensley? And now Dr. Robin Calcutt will take administration of the oath of office. She represents District Five. Dr. Calcutt? Want to thank again Mr. Manus for being here to administer the oath of office. We appreciate you being here with us this evening. Thank you, sir. Congratulations. This time, the board will take a 20-minute recess to allow families to take photos and to celebrate this occasion. Congratulations again to our board members. Please enjoy. We have reception items here in the back. And again, we'll have about a 20-minute recess and reconvene at 5:30. Thank you.
Good evening again. For the purposes of the school board's annual reorganization, I serve as temporary chairman until the election of a new chair. So with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd first like to see if there's a motion to approve tonight's agenda. I have a motion for Mr. Benway, second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Davis. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. I also like to ask at this time if Mr. Benway would lead us in the pledge of allegiance. For member Davis, would you leave us, lead us in a moment of silence, please?
I apologize for the delay. If you would please storm me in just a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. As noted, for the purposes of this annual reorganization, I will serve as temporary chairman and walk us through the election of a chairman. Once the election of a chairperson is elected, I will then turn over the gavel to that chairperson for the election of the vice chair. I want to again congratulate our, our members who were sworn back in. Mr. Hensley, congratulations, and our new members that were sworn in, congratulations. So at this time, the organizational meeting of the Moore County Board of Education is, is called to order. We have a quorum present. The purpose of this meeting is the election of board officers. The first order of business is the election of the chair. As a reminder, nominations do not require a second. Do I hear any nominations for the office of board chair?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Shannon Davis.
Okay, we have a nomination for Ms. Shannon Davis. Are there any other nominations? Okay. So, please, Dr. Dahl.
I wish to nominate Dr. Robin Calcutt.
So we have two nominations. Do I have any other nominations? Hearing none. The nominations are closed. Because we have two nominations, we will vote via ballot, a secret ballot. Board clerk, Miss Cindy Parker, will hand that out at this time. Once you've written your vote on that ballot, we will then take that up. And our attorney will read those ballots and then, then share out who was the numbers there.
And just for the board members, I will be saying the name of the board member and who they voted for?
Can a board member abstain or not in this situation? I'm sorry to pitch on-
Are you concerned since you're a nominee, or there's no concerns about you voting for yourself or for anyone else, if that's the concern?
Okay, thank you.
All right, reading these votes, as I counted them, the first vote was by Dr. Dahl for Dr. Robin Calcutt. The second vote was by Dr. Robin Calcutt for Dr. Robin Calcutt. The third vote was by Ms. Bruno for Shannon Davis. The fourth vote was for Shannon Davis by Mr. Benway. The fifth vote was for Shannon Davis by Shannon Davis. The sixth vote was for Dr. Calcutt by Mr. Johnson. And the seventh vote was by Mr. Hensley for Dr. Calcutt. Dr. Calcutt wins four to three.
Congratulations, Dr. Calcutt. Madam Chairperson, you, we can move your chair right here.
We have a chair right behind us.
Congratulations, Madam Chairperson, there's the gavel. And you will now preside over the nominations and election of a vice chair, and that's the script there in front of you.
All right, thank you, everyone. The next order of business is the election of the vice chair. As a reminder, nominations do not require a second. Do I hear nominations for the office of vice chair?
I nominate Shannon Davis.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair?
I'll nominate Steve Johnson.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. The nominees are Ms. Shannon Davis and Mr. Steve Johnson. Mrs. Parker, will you just distribute the ballots, and we'll collect them when we are ready. Please remember to sign your ballots.
All right, I've tallied the votes. Mr. Hensley voted for Steve Johnson. Steve Johnson voted for Ms. Davis. Ms. Bruno voted for Ms. Davis. Mr. Benway voted for Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis voted for Steve Johnson. Dr. Dahl voted for Shannon Davis, and Dr. Robin Calcutt has voted for Shannon Davis by five to two. Ms. Davis, your vice chair again.
Congratulations.
We'll move to the next item on the agenda, yes ma'am.
Okay, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Congratulations. Thank you all for your contributions. So our next area is item number four, reports, information and discussion. And we have two on our agenda, report on the audit, and we have a budget calendar. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and congratulations again. This evening, we have our annual audit report that's being presented this evening. We have Assistant Superintendent for Budget and Finance, Ms. Tina Edmonds, who will be with Mr. Dale Smith, who is a partner for Anderson Smith and Wyke. And we appreciate him being here tonight to present our annual audit report. So I'll ask him to come forward. Tina, you will need to cut that mic on. I think it, on the bottom of that mic, there's an on off. Thank you, Cindy.
Okay, good. Can everybody hear me? All right, good evening, Madam Chair, board members. Hope all of you are doing well, Dr. Locklear. I think everyone should have received either a bound or an electronic copy of the audit report, is that right? Hopefully you've had a chance to look over it. I'll try not to take up too much of your time this evening, so I'll be going over a few pages from the report that I think are of the most importance to you all in overseeing the finances of the school district. If there's anything you have a question on as I'm going through that I don't touch on, please feel free to interrupt at any time. The financial statements cover two main areas that we're required to audit each year. There's a financial section that covers the first fifty-nine pages, and it's followed by the compliance section, starting on page sixty. And within the detailed financial statements, there are a total of four letters that we issue that pertain to these two audit sections. And I'll go over those four letters with you this evening. And we'll start by discussing the financial section of the audit. And for the financial section, we perform an audit of the actual finances of the school system, which includes the amounts and the disclosures that you see in the report. And our opinion letter on the financial statements is on pages one through three of the bound financial statements. And we're happy to report that it is a clean, unmodified opinion, and that's exactly what you want to receive. And that lets you know that we believe that the financial statements are free from any sort of material misstatements or errors and are reliable. So if you would, let's turn over to page thirteen of the report, and we'll look at the district's governmental funds. And this page covers pretty much all of the funds of the district, except child nutrition and the childcare program. And it shows the balance sheet of the governmental funds as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And we'll be focusing on the first column, which is your general fund. And there at the top, you can see the general fund had cash and cash equivalents at June thirtieth of eight million, two twenty-nine, one ninety-two. And that amount made up the majority of the district's total assets, which were eight million, six twenty, oh oh one. And there in the middle, you had liabilities that totaled three million, two thirty-three, oh sixty-three at June thirtieth. And if you take the total assets minus the total liabilities, you get the district's ending fund balance at June thirtieth, which is the next to last number in that first column, of five million, three eighty-six, nine thirty-eight. And that amount represents an increase of about five hundred and five thousand over the fund balance that was reported at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And from talking with, with Ms. Edmonds, the board is budgeting to use two point nine million of fund balance for the current fiscal year budget, the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And you can see that number, two numbers above the five point three million, the two million, eight ninety-nine, eight eighty. And that leaves the district with an unassigned fund balance of two million and twenty thousand, three seventy-five. And I think the district has a policy to maintain an unassigned fund balance at a minimum of two million and maximum of four million. So, you know, with the unassigned fund balance right at two million, y'all are currently, you know, at the low end of that two to four million dollar range. And so if y'all do end up spending the two point nine million this coming year, you know, obviously y'all wouldn't be able to spend two point nine million again and still maintain, staying within that two to four million dollar range. So, and I know Ms. Edmonds keeps y'all well informed on the district's fund balance situation, so I'm not telling you anything you haven't already heard. But, you know, we do like to always emphasize to boards the importance of, you know, keeping a good handle on your fund balance situation. And I just wanted to be sure y'all understood that, you know, where y'all are in regards to your fund balance and that, that two to four million dollar range that y'all are trying to stay in. So y'all are at the low end of it right now. Does anyone have any questions that wanted to go over related to that? And if you read across on the fund balance line, you can see the state public school fund and the federal grants fund. They show zero fund balance, and that's normal. Y'all spend those dollars the year that you receive them. The restricted revenue fund has an ending fund balance of eight million, nine ninety-eight, two twenty-nine. And most of the revenues in this fund are restricted for various local, state and federal grants and programs like Medicaid, NC pre-K, Impact Aid. But the fund does receive some unrestricted revenues for items like indirect cost and tuition and fees. But again, the majority of those revenues that come through there are restricted. You had capital outlay fund balance of five million, two thirty, six forty-seven at June thirtieth, and all of that was restricted for capital outlay purposes only. And the individual schools combined had an ending fund balance of two million, nine seventy-two, one eighty-four. See any questions on this page? Let's turn over to page fifty-eight, and we'll look at the school food service program. And this page shows the revenues and expenditures of this program as of, or for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And if you look about three quarters of the way down, you've got a line that says net change in fund balance. It's the last line that has three columns to it. And the middle column shows the actual results for the year, and you can see the program reported a loss of seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, four twenty-nine. And the previous year, the program reported a loss of seven hundred and forty-seven thousand. Now, the program reported a six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar increase in revenues from USDA reimbursements. But these increased revenues were pretty much all offset by higher food and labor costs. It seems the USDA reimbursements have not increased at the same rate as food and labor costs, and we, we've seen that trend pretty much all across the state with all the districts we audit. And it's resulting in a lot of child nutrition programs that struggling right now to break even. Even with this reported loss y'all had this year, the program still has very good cash balance reserves at year end of about three point one million dollars. Program also paid about three hundred and ten thousand of indirect costs last year. And the indirect cost is paid back to the district and deposited into the local bank account, and it helps cover the overhead costs of the child nutrition program operating out in the schools. Management just needs to monitor the program closely and just try to get the program as close to a break even point as it can. You know, otherwise, obviously, you won't be able to- You know, otherwise, obviously, you won't be able to, you know, keep having losses of seven to eight hundred thousand a year. Probably have to quit paying indirect costs, which I think that might already be being talked about a little bit anyway, but... Anybody have any questions about the child nutrition program? And starting on page sixty, as I mentioned earlier, is the first of three letters that we issued related to the compliance portion of the audit. And we're required to test the internal controls of the district and the district's compliance with various state and federal laws and regulations related to the state and federal grant funding that flows through the district. And we're required each year to perform just various audits. I think this past year, we audited Title I, Impact Aid, State Public School Fund every year, CTE. Seems like it might have been one other program we had to audit, it varies year to year. But as part of the audit, we test a significant number of payroll and general disbursement transactions for compliance with the various state and federal laws and regulations that those grants are required to adhere to. And we're happy to report that all three of these letters are clean, unmodified reports, which means there were no internal control weaknesses, findings, or question costs reflected in any of those letters. And then we also issued a separate, three-page letter on our letterhead. It's not in the booklet, but it would have been loose that y'all would have received. And we call that a required communications letter. And it, it just details specific audit items that we're required to communicate to the board about. And the letter basically has boilerplate language, and it's considered a clean report. It discusses there were no difficulties or disagreements encountered in dealing with management during the audit. There were no uncorrected misstatements noted, and no reportable issues were noted during the audit. So again, I think all of these letters combined are about as clean of reports as you can get in your external audit. So I think your finance department does a very good job. We audited a lot of districts worldwide, and y'all do have a very well-run finance department. They do a good job of maximizing the state funding that comes into the district, fully using all the position allotments, dollar allotments, and that preserves the local dollars that flow into the district. So that's something we always look for, and y'all always do an outstanding job of that here. But that was pretty much all I planned to cover. Was there anything I didn't go over that y'all wanted me to touch on?
I have a question, Mr. Smith, correct?
That's right.
Mr. Smith, you mentioned looking at internal controls. Did you look at the controls that we have in place for modifying vendor payment instructions?
Modifying vendor payment instructions? We didn't look specifically at that.
You have a recommended process for, you know, if a vendor requests a change of payment instructions, do you have a recommended process for that?
I'm sure we could, you know, come up with one. I told, I talked to Ms. Edmonds about that.
Okay, that would be appreciated, thank you.
Sure will.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Smith, and we're very grateful for your service, and we are very grateful for Ms. Edmonds, and we just want to say thank you to you and your team. You're doing an amazing job, and we're very thankful for your service. Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is our 2025-26 budget calendar.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. As required by board policy, just sharing our current draft budget calendar. But board policy requires that I share this with you prior to the end of January. Just sharing where we currently sit with our current budget development calendar. Sharing it with you. The calendar notes in bold when attendance by the board is requested as we work through the budget process. The first step in that, obviously, we'll have continued discussions with staff and with stakeholders and with you as we move along the process from now through the end of the year. We did offer the board during board orientation, as well as sending out information to the board, opportunity for Board Budget One-on-One Learning Sessions. Those are two-by-two small group non-core meetings in December. And Ms. Parker's going to send some more information about scheduling that based on your interest and availability. We, of course, will have budget, Board Budget Committee meetings along the way if needed. You know, either from you as the board or through Ms. Edmonds and myself. We tentatively would plan to have a presentation on some of the foundational framework of building the budget for this next fiscal year at our February work session, then offering the opportunity again for those small group meetings, those two-by-two meetings in February. And then in September, excuse me, in March, I would then be presenting my preliminary proposed budget based on that preliminary work. From there, we'll have the opportunity to hear from our public through public comment, as well as through a online portal, and then have the opportunity to share that feedback with you as a board in additional two-by-two meetings. And then at our March thirty-first session, I would be presenting a revised superintendent's proposed budget. And then the board has the potential to approve your budget at the April seventh business meeting. Along the way, we'll be working, of course, with our Board of Commissioners in our county. We'll be getting their calendar at a later time, and then working with them, attending their various work sessions, and of course, sitting down and having conversations and dialogue. Prior to July first, the county commissioners are required by law to adopt their budget. So we'll know where we sit locally at that point, and based on how our state legislature comes out. And if they approve a budget by the end of the summer, we'll know that and be able to then bring all that together for our budget by hopefully October of 2025. And so this kind of lays that out in front of us. Of course, this is draft, this can change based on new information that we get or needs that the board may request from myself and Ms. Edmonds. So just wanted to share this with you tonight. And certainly, I'm open to any questions or ideas that you have. And of course, Ms. Edmonds can respond to those, Will. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Everybody good with the calendar? Okay, yes, sir.
My first question is, the proposed schedule mentions that the, that the public comment closes on fourteenth, fourteen March, the web portal for public comment. When does the pub, when does the web portal start, on March third?
Yes, sir, I offer two weeks for that. Yes, sir.
Okay. The other, the other thing I would ask the chair to consider is there's two, two-by-two meetings. Actually, there's three, two-by-two board meetings to discuss the budget. One is learning opportunities, which would presumably be to, you know, orient new board members because, you know, it is complicated. The other two, though, appear to be to discuss the budget. And I object strongly to having two-by-two meetings to discuss the budget. I understand having two-by-two meetings, the initial ones, because, you know, you're learning, you don't want to ask questions in public. But the, the two-by-two meetings at the end of February and end of March, those are substantive discussions, I believe, and made to circumvent. I mean, let's just, I mean, if, if the, if there's a need for board members to discuss the budget, then we should do it openly and have a work session to do it, not hide in the back room and have two-by-two sessions. So I, I just recommend that we not have the second two. And again, if, if the superintendent or the chair feels we need to have discussions, then let's have them in the open and public. That's my only input, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley, we'll take that under consideration. So we're ready to move on to pending actions and discussion. So, Dr. Locklear, do we have presentations on this?
Yes, ma'am, my first item for consideration from the board is purchase of new activity buses. I'd just like to say a couple things about this one because it does include the request that we waive board policy as part of this request that I'm recommending for the purchase of two additional activity buses. As, as the board may recall, and even members who are coming on board, over the last four or five years, we've made considerable efforts to, to update our activity bus fleet that had gone for quite some time without being updated and was a great need for that. Last year, when we purchased activity buses, the board also revised policy to require that when those new buses were purchased, that we purchased them with seat belts. And coming into this recommendation for this year, and I want to be upfront that I'd also had conversations with former board member Levy about this because this was something he was very passionate about. And I wanted to know my recommendation that I was bringing was that we waive the requirement for seat belts because it took us thirteen months to get those new buses when we purchased them because they're special order. And we have a need for those buses right now. And we were to move forward and purchase those right now with waiving that policy. There's potential we could receive that days after the board approves it versus months. The second reason I would recommend waiving that is because these buses are built safely for traveling and safely for our students. And all the data and indication indicates that. Certainly understand the passion around the requirement of seat belts, but I, I do recommend that that's waived with moving forward purchasing these buses. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Purvis, and we also have our Director of Transportation, Jason Nelson, here as well. Ms. Purvis.
Thank you, good evening. Staff issued a request to Activity Bus Manufacturing Companies to submit a proposal for the purchase of two activity buses. The following three companies responded with cost per bus. White's at one hundred forty-six thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars. Gregory Poole with one hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars. And Carolina Thomas, one hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. The apparent and low responsible bidder is Gregory Poole Bus Sales and Service. As such, they are recommended for the award of the two activity buses. As you know, our activity bus fleet went for many years without adding new buses and was in a state of great need for activity buses. We've been able to update our fleet, but we still have a large need for additional replacement buses. Moving forward, we plan to add at least one bus and possibly two per year to the fleet as funding allows. I will also share that within five years, we should have our fleet where it needs to be. With that said, at that point, we would probably add a bus every other year. But in five years, we'll have it so that all of our high schools have new activity buses and all of our middle schools have really good activity buses. So that's exciting. At its January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four regular business meeting, the board approved the following addition to the board policy, sixty-three oh five, Safety and Student Transportation Services, Part D, Seat Restraints. When Moore County Schools Acquires New Passenger Vehicles, included but not limited to buses, they shall be equipped or retrofitted with appropriate seat restraints for driver and each passenger. We respectfully request that this policy be waived to allow us to receive these buses in a timely manner since they are needed at present time. Currently, Gregory Poole has buses on the lot and ready to deliver. If buses were not on the lot and we had to order them with seat belts, they expect, or order them without seat belts, it would be two or three months for delivery. However, we did get an update from Gregory Poole today with most updated information. They do have stock buses on the lots, so we could receive those within the week. The last three buses specially ordered with seat belts took thirteen months to arrive. They have advised us that best-case scenario would be ten months, but it could be longer. The total cost for the two buses will be two hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred sixty-eight dollars. This amount will be pulled from eight oh two, which is generated by the revenue earned from buses, as well as indirect costs. This account currently has three hundred thirty-four thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars and twelve cents. We'll have forty-nine thousand, seventeen dollars and twelve cents remaining after the purchase of these two buses. However, moving forward, we expect, we have set aside a hundred seventy thousand dollars per year to go into the bus account. That comes from non-ESER federal indirect cost. Last year, we earned seven hundred thirty-five thousand dollars in non-direct ESSER cost, and a hundred and seventy of that is earmarked for buses, and that will be moving forward. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, these are two more buses, not the two that we, that we voted on last year.
Correct, we received three, we received three buses already. Those three buses were the ones that took us about thirteen, thirteen months to get. So we received those three. This is two new buses. This will put us in good shape at the high schools. And then, as I said, within five years, we'll have all our middle schools in good shape.
Well, I, I think it's great that you have a plan about when we need them because I think David is the one who brought that up last time, that, you know, you can't let buses just go, and then all of a sudden, we need it. But you said thirteen months, when did we, would you go back to that? Was that January?
So that last, those last three buses that we received with seat belts, when we had to order them, it took us thirteen months to get them. If we were to order these two buses that we're asking for right now with seat belts, best-case scenario would be ten months. We were told nine months last time, and it ended up being thirteen. We were told best-case scenario is ten months, so we're looking at ten months to, over that.
Okay, but would, would you go back? It was January, what year that this was voted on?
Last year.
January twenty-four, so how is that, you have the buses, so how is that thirteen months?
We went, when did we order them? We ordered them...
We have to go back and check the minutes, but I believe it was voted on to have seat belts when, when it was voted to purchase them, which was August of 2023, if I remember correctly.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, because the dates have me confused here.
Yes, ma'am, understandable. We'll, we'll double-check those minutes. Ms. Parker's writing that down right now, make sure if that's not the case, we'll, we'll make sure that's clear. Thank you, Ms. Bruno.
Okay, I'm done.
Yes, sir, Mr. Johnson.
First time on the mic. I was just, thanks. I was just hoping for the next meeting, if we could have just a breakdown and one sheet of what you're describing about the sustainability plan and, you know, the three that we've got, the two they want, and then in five years, what it would look like. I would just, just to bring me up to speed, I'd like to see that on a sheet.
Certainly. I will say, Mr. Nelson has done a great job making sure that we have a terrific plan to ensure that we don't get in the same shape and that we're great moving forward, so we can make sure that happens for you.
Thank you.
We'll share that with the whole board, Mr. Johnson, thank you.
Question, if I may. The retrofitting, retrofitting, remind me, there's additional cost if we do that, correct?
I will say, National Safety Council does not recommend retrofitting.
Okay.
That is not something that is recommended as safe because the seats in the buses are designed differently for seat belts than for retrofitting.
I remembered there was something about it, I just, okay, thank you.
So we would not go back and retrofit buses, that is not something they want us to do.
Now, for future reference, or so that we are not waiving this in additional years, can we order them much earlier than, I don't want to say off-schedule, but can you order them early and early, ten months out? You know, so that we don't continue this cycle because I, I feel like this cycle could continue.
The issue with that is that when we place an order, we have to encumber those funds. So we have to put out a PO. When we put out that PO, it's going to encumber this two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and we're not earning that money ahead of time. So we're earning about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year into that activity bus fund. So I don't have those funds to encumber, to order early, if that makes sense.
Do we have a creative solution for the future? Or just hoping that they won't be behind next time we need to order them?
Because we're going to be up to speed with the high schools, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Nelson, we hope to not be as in dire need. We're in dire need with the high schools right now, which travel the most.
Yes, ma'am.
And we need those buses for those high schools to go. Moving forward, if we were to have to wait after these two buses, tell us the situation with the high schools.
After these two, we're, we're basically going to have buses at the middle schools, even that are, that are good buses. So even if something were to happen, we could pull that bus and keep our high schools rolling. Right now, I'm, I'm short even having my middle school's a bus. So, so these two buses are going to keep us in really good shape so that we can wait next time. It's just, right now, these two are, are kind of a thorn. I've got a high school using a bus that's not big enough, and it's just not, it's, it's a burden. And I'm trying to get them to where they can, they can keep traveling, they can continue their sports, you know. I've even had high schools have to borrow a bus from another high school just so we can try to, and it's a jumble. I know the athletic directors are tired of bouncing back and forth, but, but this will put us in a really good spot to, to be able to wait. And then we can continue to upgrade as we, as we move forward.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate the juggling that you've been doing, and I'm sorry you've had to do it. But my only concern is I just don't want this to be a cycle, but you seem to have settled my fears for that. Okay, thank you, sir.
In full transparency, this may be, Ms. Davis, this may be a piece of the policy we want to reexamine and talk again about the requirement. But at this point, you know, that's, that's not something that I'm bringing forward for a potential policy review. But just in full transparency, it may be something we want to sit down, have Ms. Nelson and Ms. Purvis and just kind of take another look at this requirement.
You need a motion, or is, I'm sorry.
We're not voting tonight, this, this works us, yes.
So let me, actually, Dr. Locklear, you kind of mentioned what I was going to bring up. What are, how many school districts around us have seat belts on their buses? What are, how many school districts around us have seat belts on their buses?
Uh, I think there's two in North Carolina.
Yeah, out of 117 school districts, we're one of two. It's kind of like our SROs. We're one of two. Uh, the, um, the reason I bring it up is, uh, I remember when we were discussing seat belts in this policy, uh, like, everybody, nobody recommends seat belts on buses. There was one obscure study that, you know, was pulled out, and there were thousands of other studies that said no, and there was one obscure study that said yes. And if I remember, I was trying to look it up, but it wasn't in the minutes. Uh, uh, the central office was opposed to the policy of requiring seat belts, right?
Yes, sir. I did not recommend it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that was my recollection. So, I, I would recommend that we, you know, we should revisit that policy. But, you know, to Dr. Locklear's point, it's, uh, beyond the scope of this. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. That was really informative, and we appreciate y'all, your hard work.
Thank you.
All right, next, out-of-state field trips.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have Ms. Metcalf here with, uh, future field trip requests from Union Pines High School. Ms. Metcalf.
Hi. So, we have three from Union Pines. The first one is the traditional standard one. Uh, it is for the softball team. Would like to travel to participate in a tournament, April 14th through April 16th. Um, the second two are sort of contingencies. So, the, uh, Union Pines ROTC rifle, um, team are competing this month in the area championships. If they win the area championship this month, they would like to go to the, uh, area, to the, I'm sorry, the area meet, to the area championships on January 18th in, uh, North Augusta, uh, South Carolina. If they are successful there, they would then like to, uh, compete at the national championships, February 16th through the 18th in Anniston, Alabama. So, they're putting these two in as potential if they win, because they'll come up very quickly.
And, Ms. Metcalf, if I may, uh, last year, it came up so quickly that those, these were examples of ones in which I approved in between board meetings and then see, you know, and emailed you and communicated that information with you, which I have the ability to do. But so, credit to them. They're thinking ahead. And they've been very successful in the past and gone to the nationals, so there's a great likelihood they will again. So, thank you, Ms. Metcalf, and this comes with my recommendation for approval.
Thank you very much. Wish them well. Hope they win.
Yeah, you do, too.
And the next is the revised, updated Moore County Board of Education meeting calendar for January 2025 through July 2026.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yes, each year, uh, at least in the last few years, in December, the board, um, looks at their meeting calendar for the whole next year, and this is that routine time to take a look at that. This is also an opportunity to take a look at any times that may need to be tweaked based on needs of the board. Uh, after, uh, conversing with our newly formed board and newly formed board members, um, I am bringing forth this calendar revises, um, the meeting times and meeting dates, or adds meeting dates all the way out through, to June of 2026. One noted revision based on the needs of the board is our work session start times, which, uh, over the last couple of years, it began at 9:00 a.m., um, changing that start time to 1:30 p.m. Uh, to, again, to accommodate the, the new, new needs of our current board. Uh, this would allow for a later start time for, for those board members who need that, and also continues to think about the impact on our staff and trying to keep our work session times within the work day, uh, as best possible. Of course, sometimes we would go beyond that. The other thing I'll point out is in June, uh, of 2025, in June of 2026, uh, June 30, I think it is, uh, Ms. Parker, uh, I will point out, as you'll see on the screen, uh, that is our only combined work session business meeting we have on the calendars over the next two years. Uh, just as we did this past July, we had a work session for our July meeting, and then we rolled right into our regular business meeting, because that's that July meeting, uh, we were trying to take care of that in one meeting. This actually has us meeting based on how the calendar works out on June 30 of 2025 and June 30 of 2026. Um, and so, I just wanted to point that out, because that's the only one that's a little different. So, again, these revised, uh, and additional calendar meeting dates, uh, come with my recommendation. Happy to answer any questions or have a discussion. Thank you.
Any questions or discussion?
I do.
Okay, yes, sir.
Uh, just a, a couple of things. Um, our Mondays, you know, in a lot of workplaces, Mondays tend to be hectic. I don't know if that's true in academia, but, uh, have you considered, or I, I think we should give it some thought, uh, that maybe we move our work, work sessions to Tuesday, because a lot of them get moved to Tuesday anyway, because of holidays. I just thumbed through there, and three or four of them, maybe five, were changed to Tuesday anyway. So, just for the sake of consistency, I mean, really, it's the convenience of the board members, uh, who work that don't particularly have flexible schedules. But, uh, I, you know, the, uh, the, the business meeting, you know, remain on Monday, because you got, you know, the county commissioners are on Tuesday, you know, and it conflicts. But I, I think we ought to look at moving the business meeting to another, uh, day of the week. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, the work session, thank you. I don't really feel strongly, it just, we, a lot of them get moved because of the holidays anyway.
Yes, sir. We can continue to talk about that, and we can revise this calendar at any time, if the board may want to do that. Uh, the one, as you noted, the Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, and sometimes that would be the same day we're having a work, could potentially be that way. Usually, our work sessions are the first Monday, um, so it could conflict with being able to attend or participate in Board of Commissioners meeting, but certainly something the board could continue to, to entertain and think about, and certainly we can revise if needed.
Thank you for that point, and we'll take it under consideration. Thank you. Um, so, since this is my first time, do I, uh, request for these items to be put on, um, consent agenda? Thank you, Shannon. Yeah.
Yeah, as long as there doesn't seem to be any disagreement on the board, then, uh, typically, they would go through one by one and consent or action and fill the, fill the board for that.
Is, or is the board ready to entertain that idea to put items on the consent agenda? Okay? All right, we'll start with the first one, the purchase of new activity buses. Raise your hand if you'd like to put that on the consent agenda, so I can see it. Okay, very good. All right, out-of-state field trips. Raise your hand if you agree for a consent agenda. Okay, all right, all in agreement. Um, revised, updated Moore County Board of Education meeting calendar. Raise your hand if you agree to put that on the consent agenda. Looks like, Mr. Hensley, no? Or you, yes? Okay, so, all, all in agreement. And then, um, we have our next board meeting, regular business meeting on December the 9th.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, all of those items will go on our consent agenda for that, um, meeting. And now, we're ready for board comments. So, I'd like to start with Mr. Hensley.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson?
Uh, just gratitude for, um, all of you, all the, really glad to serve with you guys. Uh, I just on the record saying thank you to all the folks that, uh, supported me throughout this, uh, to get here. Uh, my wife in particular, uh, who, if you've met her, I married way up. Um, but just want to put that on the record, because I hear it any day, every day, anyway. Um, but just excited to serve with you all. I really feel a lot of energy in the room. I feel like this is gonna be a great reset. I'm very excited. I don't know if I'd go to the level of fired up, uh, but I am, I am excited to, to get working. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Davis?
Yes, well, I am fired up, and I am really, uh, am ready to go. Um, I am, I'm thankful that you guys are here, and I'm excited for what we're gonna be able to do in the future, and congratulations to you as well. And, uh, that's, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mr. Benway?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, again, uh...
Remember your mic, please, sir. Yeah, it is good.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I did have someone say the other day, "Mr. Benway, that's difficult to hear you whenever they're listening online." So, mm-hmm, they want to hear what you have to say.
All right. Again, I'd like to extend our, our congratulations and welcome to the new board members and to the new board, uh, leadership. Looking forward to, uh, uh, exercising, uh, some, some great efforts here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Benway. Mrs. Bruno?
Yes, here I am. Um, yeah, I, I really want to welcome you guys. We're really happy to have you, and, uh, congratulations on, on your chairmanship, and we're really thrilled to have you. Um, the other thing, uh, Ken and I are starting our visits. Um, we're going to a PLT at Elise, um, on Thursday, and then we'll be going to Carthage, Robbins, and Pickney. So, we're starting to do our, our visits. The other one, and I am gonna mention this at the school board, too, is we have a book, The Writing Revolution, which is absolutely awesome for our kids. It is an amazing book, and you know, you all know how I feel about reading and writing, and this is excellent. This is the way you and I learned. It is an amazing book. I am so thrilled with it. Welcome again.
Thank you, Mrs. Bruno. Dr. Dial?
I'm gonna echo the comments of some others. Moore County Schools is a truly wonderful place, and I cannot express enough how honored I am to be serving, uh, the schools in this capacity and to be serving with all of you up here. So, um, like some other people here, I'm fired up and ready to go.
All right. And finally, I want, I wrote mine down. I want to thank the current and newly elected Moore County Board of Education members for their dedicated years of service. Dr. Locklear and the entire Moore County Schools community of students, teachers, staff, and families for their unwavering commitment to education and excellence. I am profoundly grateful to the people of Moore County for placing their trust in me to serve as a member of the Board of Education. It's a true privilege to contribute to the growth and success of our schools and to support the children, families, educators, and staff who make our community exceptional. Public education is a vital foundation of public good, and here in Moore County, we are fortunate to have such an extraordinary opportunity to positively impact the lives of our students and their families. I am honored to be a part of this mission and look forward to serving alongside our Moore County Schools team and with dedication and purpose. So, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So much.
Second?
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor, say, "Thank you." There we go. I about forgot that part.